Good evening, the time is now 7:00 PM and I would like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. Our inspiration tonight is going to be the students of Shoal Creek Elementary and I would like to welcome Dr. Richmond to come to the podium.
Good evening Board, Dr. Oates, and parents and children, thank you all for being here. I would like to introduce Ms. Harris and our wonderful students that they'll come into our inspiration.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Music) Believe in yourself and all that you are. Know that there is something inside of you that is greater than any obstacle. If you believe in yourself, every day is possible.
Excellent.
(Music) For our dedication, do you believe in us?
Absolutely. Excellent, excellent.
Do you believe in us?
Yeah.
But we believe in ourselves.
Yeah.
That's so sweet.
(Music)
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you, thank you so much.
That's so sweet, that's so cute. That was excellent, thank you so much for the goodies and the great performance. Next, we'll move on to adopting the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second, Akita.
I have a motion and second, all in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Next, we'll move to our school presentation and that is Honey Creek Elementary School, Ms. Lanier.
Greetings, Madam Chairwoman Brown, Dr. Oates, School Board, Superintendents Cabinet, and Community Members. I am the proud and humble Principal of Honey Creek Elementary, where we see our students as critical thinkers in a global society advocating for themselves and others. Our work is guided by our commitment to ensure excellence and empower our students academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally. Our passion is fueled through our focus on practices rooted in a viable STEM experience. Tonight, I have the honor to present alongside some of our exceptional support staff. We have our STEM coach, Mrs. Angela Reeves, our math coach, Mrs. Sarah Marshall, and our literacy coach, Mrs. Kimberly Johnston. These ladies will provide a small view into the amazing things happening in our Hive. First, I'll ask, what is STEM? According to the state of Georgia, it is a education that lends itself to a curriculum that is integrated, exploratory, and most importantly, student-centered. We understand the impact of our students' positive experiences with education and the impact STEM has on our students for future college and career readiness, even as young as four and five-year-olds. My hope is after tonight's presentation, you will be inspired by the body of work we have to share with you. The roots of our program started well before my time at the Hive. However, it was very evident of its importance communicated by, early by, our stakeholders, including parents, staff, and our very own Superintendent, Dr. Oates. It is my understanding that the seed was planted more than 10 years ago. Seen here are some of the early experiences for STEM at HCE. This picture represents students engaged in exploration, collaboration, and critical thinking. This is a glimpse of our program today. I hope you will be able to see the joy our students experience and that it warms your heart as it does mine on a regular basis.
Our program has been developed with a focus on citizen science. We want our students to feel like scientists themselves. So rather than making up something for them to do, they're actually engaged in real science, collecting data that's being shared with scientists in the field and helping to drive decisions that are made in our state and beyond. We also concentrate on project-based learning, an experience that is integrated. So we have lessons that integrate math, science, social studies, and language arts. So we're not just learning, we're doing. It's also a STEM for All approach. So what you'll see is their experiences for our youngest students and all the way up to fifth grade. With project-based learning, our students are asking questions and investigating, developing, designing, planning, finding solutions, and taking advantage of all the industry experts we can find. Pictured, you'll see Dr. Lashley from Honey Creek Vets working with our kindergarten students, as well as our school media specialist who happens to have some chickens. So in this unit, we were learning about animals and their offspring and we were able to investigate those and have a library experience with a rooster. Our first graders experienced some gardening activities and they were also studying weather, so here they made some rain gauges, but they also provided advice to others on how to take care of their plants. Second grade noticed some changes happening in our environment, so we integrated our math standards and allowed our students to collect data from our schoolyard to help us make decisions. We took advantage of resources from the Stone Mountain Memorial Association and the Georgia Association of Conservation Districts to make this happen. Our third graders were able to investigate pollution and they noticed some things happening around our schoolyard. We found that people were having lunch in our garden, but they were leaving their trash behind. So they chose this as the focus for their project-based learning experience. This unit happened to be our favorite one because we were able to bring in lots of partners. As a result, we not only have our garden cleaned up, but we were also able to create a school-wide event that impacts the entire community. Fourth graders investigated our water usage. They looked at how much water we're using at home and ways to curb that usage. Then later in the year, they created some carnival games that we could use at our school-wide end-of-the-year celebration. Fifth graders investigated life science with the help of Dr. Michael Black from Georgia State University. Now, he's a neuroscientist, but he has a passion for sustainability. So that allowed us to bring together both areas to create a Shark Tank-style experience for our students. They looked at the problems they noticed in our garden, developed their own plans, worked out the funding, and presented to our PTO board. Our PTO board decided which plan was the best and they funded that project. So in the spring, you'll see evidence of their work. Other activities allow us to reach across classrooms. Here, you can see our third and fifth grade students engaged in a problem-solving task where we've got some sand towers that we want to save. So while both grades were looking at earth science standards, we were able to bring them together for some investigations and work out some design problems. Okay, so another key component in STEM is community partnerships. And so as mentioned earlier, our third graders have a PBL that they did and it turned into a school-wide event, that's our Hands on Honey Creek. So this is an opportunity for our current students and families and former students and families and staff members and their families, community members all come in and we try to beautify Honey Creek Elementary. So we work on the outside and we work on the inside. We have a partner, Mr. Kellecheck, he comes in quite often, helps in the garden throughout the school year, not just on Hands on Honey Creek Day. We also have, okay, we also have another school-wide event that kicks off right in August. It's our pollination, our honeybees go out and they take pollination data. They look at the pollinators, they count it. That data actually gets put into a statewide or southeastern now database where they use that information to make decisions about the agriculture in the state of Georgia, as well as our students use that same information to help us make decisions about our garden and how we can keep honeybees healthy in our area. Another thing that we engage our students in is GIS Day. And this is something that's probably not as well-known, it's kind of a newer technology, but they have the opportunity to invite specialists in GIS and they have the opportunity to discover how GIS is used in Conyers. As a matter of fact, I believe because of our interaction with the GIS specialists, there's something created in Conyers that allows families to identify inexpensive ways to spend the day in our community.
We also take part in Science, Computer Science Education Week. You may have heard of Hour Code, we make it the whole week long because with STEM, it just aligns perfectly. It usually happens in December, our students are engaged in all sorts of different computer science activities, as well as we bring in experts from different fields to come and speak with our students so that they are able to see real-world type experiences that they can use with the computer science. Our students that you see here, some of them are actually using robots to be able to program, so they're coding where they need to go or coding their way out of a maze. So our goal is so that we can expand computer science and STEM into our community and have more of an impact as they grow into middle and high school so that they can choose those career paths and allow them to be prepared for those more engaging fields. Our science and STEM does not just happen during school hours, we also engage our students and families outside of school. So we have a Title I STEM Night that happens every year. It's an opportunity for our families to come out and learn more about the projects that we've been working on at Honey Creek. They get a chance to have some of the same experiences that their students may have had, some of those STEM experience and activities. And our Science Olympiad students, which is one of the clubs I'll highlight in just a moment, they take the lead in sharing some of the things that they do with our families at Honey Creek during that STEM night. We have some other clubs that are STEM-related, we have our Math 24 Club. Math 24 participates in our regional competition every year. We also have a technology club that gives our students a chance to learn about technology and go deeper with what you can do with it. Right now, our students are working on projects to compete in the Georgia Student Technology Competition coming up soon and it's an annual event that happens. I mentioned Early Science Olympiad. It is a way for our students to experience STEM outside of the normal classroom experience. These students are in a club, so it takes place after hours. They engage in all sorts of different science tasks, they are given a goal based on the materials that they have and they have to figure out how to make it work. So it's a lot of fun activities in order for them to use their knowledge of the STEM process, solve that problem, and kind of give them a chance to apply it in a new way. Our Science Olympiad team, along with many of our other schools from Rockdale, competed in our very first Regional Science Olympiad event. It happened at Honey Creek last year, we were able to have five schools to sign up and participate in this event. It was fantastic, but we're hoping this year, we want it to grow and get all 11 schools to come and join us this year. So if you're available on March 16th, we're going to go ahead and invite you. Come on out, enjoy some of our science fun, see if you can get the egg drop not to break, no. Have fun, it's enjoyable and it's a great experience for all the students and the families who get to attend.
So with all of those activities, all of the experiences we're providing, what's the result? The impact for us has been a rise in our scores in science. Our students are more engaged, they're excited, and they're going so far as to skip breakfast to come to the science lab. So they're loving it. We're really proud of the progress that we're making and we're looking forward to our next steps toward state certification. We'll end with a glimpse into some of the things that have been happening science and STEM-wise at Honey Creek this year.
No need to hold.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, is there any questions for these ladies?
As a token of our appreciation, we have a small gift for our board, thank you.
Great job, lots of exciting things happening at Honey Creek, thank you so much ladies. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next, we have our presentation, Presentation of Certificates and Awards. And at this time, I would like to ask Justin, being one of our most festive board members, and Akita, if they would join us.
Well, holiday greetings, Madam Chair Brown, Board Members, Dr. Oates, to our Cabinet and Guest Members that are in attendance tonight. Tonight, we will begin with some of our talented student artists. For the second year, Dr. Oates has held the Superintendent's Holiday Card Art Contest. This year, over 150 entries were submitted and six different works were chosen for his holiday cards, which are given to staff, government officials, superintendents, and other education affiliates. Students, when I call your name, please come to the front to receive your certificate and remain up front for a group photo. I will ask our guests to direct their attention to the big screen to view the winning artwork for this year's Superintendent's Holiday Card Contest. Congratulations to the following students. From General Ray Davis Middle School, 7th grader Alada Ponce Hernandez. Also from Davis Middle School, 8th grader Zamina Torres. From Salem High School, 9th grader Takaya Griffin. Also from Salem High School, 11th grader My Angel Jenkins. From Heritage High School, 11th grader Ashley Shirley. And finally, from Heritage High School, 12th grader Elena Krobic. And parents, you're also welcome to come up and take pictures, but we'll also post them onto our social media accounts as well. One more, wait, just one minute, please. Congratulations, students. The Georgia Center for Civic Engagement recently conducted the Be the People Voter Drive to encourage high school students to register to vote. High schools throughout the state were encouraged to register all students 17 and a half years and older. This was a competition that took place over 30 days in over 80 high schools across the state. The winning high school in this competition was Salem High School. Salem won a trip to the Georgia Governor's Mansion. I think that definitely. And so they won a trip to the Georgia's Governor's Mansion for up to 50 of its students. This trip included a tour led by First Lady Kemp and a luncheon with Senator Kelly Loeffler and other elected officials. The Georgia Center for Civic Engagement sponsors civic clubs in almost 100 school districts across the state, serving over 165,000 K-12 students annually and are led by civic coaches. Andre Sparkman, a teacher at Salem High School, is a part of the Georgia Center for Civic Engagement Civic Coach Program. He and teachers Sharice Liggins and Megan Mitchell worked hard to engage students and win this year's wonderful trip to the Governor's Mansion. Congratulations to the following students and teachers. First, Zoe Anderson. Denise Davis. Sage Farr. Jada Theus. Harris Trust. And joining our Salem students are their teacher sponsors, we have Sharice Liggins. Megan Mitchell. And Mr. Andre Sparkman.
You need two rows, Michelle, and get one.
Any parents?
Okay, congratulations Salem.
Back to our school, Honey Creek Elementary again. Members of the National Junior Beta Club at Honey Creek Elementary recently traveled to Savannah to participate in the annual Georgia Elementary Beta Club Convention. Conventions give members the opportunity to interact, share project ideas. Conventions give members the opportunity to interact, share project ideas, and showcase their academic and leadership abilities. Activities range from academic contests, to quiz bowls, to talent competitions. Tonight, we congratulate this group for winning several awards at the convention. We will bring them up by category, so some of our students will come up more than once. When we finish with one category, we will take a group photo and then move on to the next group. We will begin with our teacher sponsor, so that she can remain up front for the group, for the photo with each group. Our appreciation for outstanding leadership goes to Dr. LaShonda Hawkins. And joining Dr. Hawkins is our first group, who won first place for recyclable art. They are Kamora Ross. Ava Pruitt. Marlee Jackson. And De'Er Mahollen. We're not going to let Kamora go too far, because she's back up with the next group. And this group won third place for the Large Group Performing Arts, and again, we have Ms. Kamora Ross. Noel Boone. Ava Pruitt. Anaya Peterson. Marlee Jackson. Sydney Banks. Whitney Compton. Ayla Reeves. She said, so is mom getting it on her behalf? Jaslyn Williams. Mason Key. Peyton Thomas. Kaia Tony. And Aubrey Hill.
All right, y'all, look at me. Thank you.
All right, and this next student won fifth place for the category Spanish. We have Jamili Ay Karasco Perez. She's not here, okay. And our final group for tonight, won fifth place in the scrapbook competition. So again, that's fifth place in the scrapbook competition, those students are, again, I think we've seen her a couple of times. Kamora Ross, come on back up. Returning again also is Noel Boone. Grayson Harris. Ava Pruitt. Anaya Peterson. Marlee Jackson. Sydney Banks. Whitney Compton. Ayla Reeves. Alonso Rogers. Jaslyn Williams. De'Er Mahollen. Mason Key. Kingston Toussaint. Peyton Thomas. And Kaia Tony. And if we can get our sharp-looking students back up on those risers, please. And if we can get our sharp looking students back up on those risers, please.
Sorry to be the last one, people, but thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our everybody here who didn't have their phones. Feel free to smash the photos on our social media. I thought it should all be all.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we are coming to the section where we recognize visitors for comments and we do have a visitor who would like to speak tonight. Before Mr. Kelchak comes, I need to read the policy. At this time, we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or if you contend your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of the meeting. At this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Kelchak.
Good evening, everyone. George Kelchak, Chairman, Rockdale Soil Water Conservation District. Apologize for the voice, but I've been working outside for a while. First of all, you have in front of you the farm bill. Not sure if y'all are aware, this is the largest legislative item that is voted on in the United States every five years. Seventy-six percent of the farm bill is appropriated to the SNAP program that feeds our children. Please ensure that you contact your legislatures, both at the state and federal level, because sixty percent of the folks that will vote on this in December of twenty-four have never voted on a farm bill before. Secondly, I attended the Native Georgia Plant Society meeting at Kennesaw State University for three days last month. I have before you the benefits of school garden. You have before you from the Dalton Public School System, a collaborative education restoration and preservation project that was accomplished by many different individuals and agencies. Park Creek Elementary is now successfully, after all this work, they have a community garden. The reason why is the Georgia Department of Agriculture reported to us last month that one out of ten or one million Georgians go are going hungry every day out of ten million. That's unacceptable. The one way that we can correct this, not only in Dalton Public School System, but Rockdale County Public School System, is let us look at a collaborative effort between the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation District and agencies throughout the state. And I'm asking Honey Creek Elementary School to be the prototype. They've agreed to it. To let's start a community garden there. We're gonna have some hoops to jump through, but I know we can do it. And this is one way we can make this commitment and make sure that all Georgians are fed on a daily basis. And I'll reserve any comments. I'll bring you more information every month on things that we're doing at the state level that are affecting our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelchak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We'll move on. The next item is Superintendent Cabinet Updates and Office of School Safety is first. Mr. Green.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Oates, members of the Cabinet. I give you our mid-year overview of Office of School Safety. It's my understanding that you were privy to this earlier this week, so I'll just go through it rather quickly and point out some standouts and pause for any comments that you may have as needed. As you all know, the governor signed into law House Bill one forty-seven this year that mandates that all schools participate in an active intruder drill to be completed by October the first of two thousand and twenty-three. I'm proud to say that all of our schools and programs completed this by September the twenty-fifth, twenty-three. Congress Police Department was in attendance for all their schools of focus. Rockdale DMA was at attendance for all of our schools and the Sheriff's Departments were also in their attendance for all schools of their focus. This also provided us the ability to talk to our schools during this time about some internal and external procedures as it relates to relocation and reunification. Something that we hope we never do, but we know that it is an important conversation to have. We actually use internal relocation quite a bit in the school district for various reasons, but it's also to have those conversations about the external components. We still committed to our no-cost commitments that we think is the foundation, that we believe is the foundation of our school safety program with all interior, exterior doors closed, internal and external IDs, the use of checkmate and substitute teachers getting their IDs from the central office. This year, we're still continuing with one of our cost commitments with Open Gate. Open Gate has been deployed over seventy-eight times throughout our district. We've had on two occasions, on eight-three, we were found vapes and THC gummies at one high school. And then on nine fifteen, another high school pepper spray and taser was found during one of the deployments. We also, when I was here last, we talked about the use of Open Gate at our athletic events. So we've extended Open Gate and also our clear bookbag procedures that we have inside of our school to our athletic events. This season, during a football contest, one of our students was not in compliance with our expectations for the clear bookbag. And what you see in front of you is what the student had when the search of his non-clear bookbag was done by one of our school administrators. You see a nine-millimeter handgun that was found inside the bag with a laser on it, a thirty-round magazine, as well as another magazine, and not shown was a ski mask. This student, of course, was arrested by one of our local law enforcement jurisdictions. We have continued these processes on to now to our basketball events as well. Our student discipline data for elementary schools, you will see NC for no change, I for there's a slight increase or increase and D for decrease. You'll see the totals here for our elementary schools. We've had an increase in total incidents for the top three incidents from last year compared to this year. Same incident as this year, we've had a slight increase. Our referrals was a slight increase as well as the students as well. Also looking at our elementary school data, standouts, sorry, this is open on its own. Standouts, our disruptions, significant increase there as well as physical contact with staff. There was a slight increase. We've had a decrease in fighting as well as a increase in student batteries. Decrease in BB guns and increase in vaping.
Director Green, if I can, for our Board's benefit, in the case of vaping, and you're gonna see that Director Green has a slide that talks about some of the interventions and strategies that are being used, but I will share with the Board that those eleven instances of vaping were all at one school, as I understand.
Yes, they were all at one.
One elementary school. So I just want to put that context there. One elementary school. So we've been able to work with the Assistant Superintendent for that elementary school and they actually have done some very specific things involving those students who were involved in that vaping incident.
Again, moving on to our elementary school data, you'll see, I'm sorry, this is moving on its own. You'll see on the left-hand side, the SY twenty-two, twenty-three, and you can see also on the right-hand side, twenty-three, twenty-four. And we've had some declines, but there's nothing significant. We really didn't have any outstanding standouts last year that will cause for any observations or standouts this year. Our elementary school plan of action or action steps. For FY twenty-three, we had three schools reorganized operational and eight schools reorganized as emergency implementation of positive behavioral intervention services, PBIS. Maximize school-based counseling and social emotional learning supports. Encourage participation in clubs, extracurricular activities. Five schools are piloting No Place For Hate. Approximately two hundred and one students are receiving mentoring services. Of course, school safety personnel assigned to the elementary schools now. Continue with Open Gate weapons detection systems in the schools and continue use of the clear bookbags.
I will point out that first bullet, FY twenty-three, three schools recognized as operational and eight schools recognized as emerging for PBIS purposes. I know that some of you on the day is familiar with that, but this is something that we're very proud of. Patrice Graham is our Title IX person, but she's also has responsibility for leading up our district's PBIS efforts. And so I commend her working closely with the schools, but certainly commend the schools for the work that they've done to get this recognition. Because you know that it's been a priority and it is a renewed priority for our district to continue along the PBIS path.
Middle school data again, SY twenty-two, twenty-three compared to twenty-three, twenty-four. Decreased standout knives over two inches. We had a significant decrease in that. Decrease in fights, though it's a wherever you little will take it. And then standout, a decrease in our students and our referrals for the middle school. Again, middle school data. Apologize, is this have some mind of his own. A decrease again in fighting, an increase in batteries, the five-point-three batteries on students. That was an increase. Drugs, that was a slight increase and then vaping, again, a slight increase. In middle school data, decrease in taking true to loop picks. And again, no significant changes from last year to this year in our middle school data. High school standouts, decrease in narcotics or drugs. Increase in fighting, three or more, one-point-one-four. Decrease in knives, a decrease in our total infraction events this year to last year. Our referrals a decrease and an increase in our students. Again, our high school discipline data disruptions, one-point-five disruptions, a decrease. A decrease in physical assaults with staff. That's physical contact, that's this incidental contact touching the staff member. Increase in fighting. A decrease in the battery fights, a significant decrease, almost a little over fifty percent decrease in that. One-point-one-four group fights, a increase in that. A decrease in knives over two inches. Decrease in BB guns, a decrease in drugs and a decrease in vaping. Again, high school discipline data. Again, if you're looking at SY twenty-two, twenty-three and comparing it to this school year, there's no significant standouts that'll cause for anything to be pointed out. Secondary school action steps, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, schools reorganized for emerging implementation of PBIS. Maximize school-based counseling and social emotional learning supports. Encourage participation in clubs, extracurricular activities. Three schools piloting No Place For Hate. Approximately two hundred and twenty-three students receiving mentoring services. Again, the second SRO sign all high schools. Continue deploy Open Gate weapons detection system within schools and continue use of the clear bookbags. Total of all RCPS schools, top three infractions last year. Again, compared to this year, we're sitting pretty good with a decrease in everything. Skipping, fighting, intentionally making noise and the total number of incidents from last year to this year, decrease in the number of students at ISS, a decrease in number of students in OSS. Again, sum of days ISS a decrease, but we have an increase in the sum of days of OSS. Number of referrals last year to this year. HPD referrals last year to this year, we've had a decrease in referrals and a decrease in the number of students. Number of referrals, all schools, we have an increase. And we have a decrease in the number of students, all referrals, all schools. Student disciplinary hearings last year to this year. More tribunals, less waivers signed, total process is a slight decrease. Student enrollment last year versus this year as of the first day of school. And then our standouts, reduction in weapons infractions, reduction in drugs, vaping, reduction in skipping, reduction in fights, reduction in high priority discipline and reduction in student disciplinary hearings.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
On the slide where you were talking about using Open Gate and then you talked about what was. Page two. Thank you very much. My question is, okay, it was on page four for me, that what you said that you found with Open Gate. It was my understanding it's more like a metal detector. I mean, I understand, but is it also able to find like the THC gummies?
I really don't want to get into it in this open forum with the capabilities of the Open Gate. I will say. I will say though that the T H C gummies was found during the secondary screening.
Okay, so I was, and how many times have we or has our law enforcement taken the dogs in?
Uh, that's a, that we have a, that's been going on continually since the beginning of the school. We've had some issues with our law enforcement and the dogs that they've had. Um, more particularly our sheriff's office, um, that we had to go out to another county to get uh, get a dog in. Um, so that's being ramped up now. Um, with those, you know, starting to uh, uh, this, the city and the sheriff is starting to get their own dogs now, so that's starting to get ramped up. We're starting to get a regular schedule. Um, but earlier in the year, there was an issue because of the availability of dogs uh in our own county. So we had to outsource that and there was issues there because the dog can only work a certain amount of hours in a day.
One thing I'd like to address is, is I do know that this is something we've talked about for a number of years now. In terms of our S R O coverage, and I know that uh Justin raised this issue previously about elementary schools. And coverage and so one of the things is, I know that you, Director Green, have, if you could just share briefly how you've reached out.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So I reached out to uh, at your request, I reached out to our law enforcement partners to ask about their availability. Um, to have S R Os at our elementary schools. Of course, this will be an ask of one S R O from Congress P D and ten from the sheriff's office. Uh, Chief Freeman has stated that he supports it, but it's has to be some higher level discussions at the county commissioner is also for Manning. And things of the sort. Uh, we're still waiting for the sheriff's department um to make a formal response to that request. Um, but again, I know uh firsthand that that would be a hard ask for the sheriff's department. Again, they're still having a uh, a hard time meeting their current ask, our current ask now within our schools. I get a daily report of the scheduling for each one of our um, our S R Os from the, from the sheriff's office. Uh, throughout our district and it's very far and few between that they're actually meeting uh, the goal that we're asking them of two S R Os in every high school. So I know that would be a hard ask for them with them coming up with additional uh ten S R Os.
Yeah, I uh, I have shared and I will be sharing with the board in our weekly. Board brief is that, of course, you heard about the one thousand dollar retention supplement. The Governor Kemp has provided for educators and of course, Keith and I have had conversations. We're awaiting a document that they will be sending us that will give us clarity. We know we'll be using the C P I structure to determine who will be involved uh in terms of the certified personnel. And uh, but there, so we're waiting that, but also part of that announcement was forty-five thousand dollars per school for safety funding. That'll will initially be provided, but then the goal, Keith, is it not for it to be a recurrent uh, of funding that's available in each subsequent annual budget, is that state budget? Right. And and that's exciting. That's a big deal, actually. And it can be used for personnel and infrastructure. And so one of the things we're talking about is, we know the cost associated with an S R O on the model and structure that we have currently. But might you not consider persons who are otherwise qualified to serve a security function within the within that amount that's being provided as we look at coverage for elementary schools? But internally, we want to have a lot of discussion about what we think is the best use of those dollars. But as we keep in mind that our ideal goal would be to have full coverage at elementary. We, we, we're going to have to ha- have a consideration of those dollars that hopefully that will be flowing annually as is the plan, so.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I see that you all conducted the active shooter drill back in September.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that bill also allows for parents to opt out of their children participating in that exercise.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all have something in lieu of, or what is, what is done to educate even those children who opt out of that full exercise? Of what to do in the case of an active shooter?
Yes, ma'am. Great question. So it's my understanding that the, the board voted that there will be no opt-out in our school district.
That's correct.
Okay.
So what the law required, the law defers to local boards of education to make that decision. And we made the decision that we would not allow opt-out students.
Okay.
I, I'm also proud to say, we've been conducting uh intruder drills uh prior to me being here now. Of course, my arrival, we, we retweet uh some of the things of how we're doing and what we're doing and what we're calling it. But this is something we've been doing a while, so I'm proud to say that we were ahead of the curve. And not only on this, but many things that we're doing here in Rockdale. Um, that we're actually showing that's working for us and that other school districts have reached out to us and now implementing many of the things that we have in place.
Director Green, I want to thank you for reaching out to the sheriff uh and your continued efforts. It wasn't trying to secure S R Os or seeing the feasibility of that at the elementary school. I truly appreciate that. By being a, an elementary school teacher. I just have a quick question about the group fighting.
Yes, sir.
That's sort of the, the standout, uh, the high school group fighting that has doubled in uh since last year. Is this centralized in one particular school? Is this gang-related activity? What is, do we know what the cause of this uptick in group fighting is?
I would say not necessarily. I know that we have some issues here as it, as it pertains to. Now, I want to be careful how I frame this, uh gangs, gangs in our, in or around our, our communities. Um, but I actually was on a meeting this morning and um to it, it was conversations about gangs in around our schools, but I immediately went to our data to look at that. So we're going to say we have a habit, if we had a gang problem in our schools, there should definitely be some data to back that up. And I will tell you just a quick research this morning after my meeting. There was only two incidents related to gangs in our, in our entire school district and that was just two students that threw gang signs. And that was it. So there's nothing else that was shown in our district that relates to gangs or gang activity. So what we know and what we can prove is, is, or what we believe and what we can prove is two different things. Um, we do know uh that we have some issues that, that, that spill over from our communities. Um, the uptick, I don't know if there's a rhyme or reason for the uptick. Um, but we have, do have an increase in, in those one point one fours uh as you see.
I, I do want to share this just to fall back to what Ms. Jones said. I want to make sure that we're clear for the record. When I said that the board voted uh, but to not allow students to opt out, it wasn't a formal vote. I want to be clear on that and thanks for that, Ms. Jones. We were in executive session having to discuss it in under the rubric of safety. And there was clear consensus among the board that we would not allow for opting out. So I just want to be clear on that. Wasn't a formal vote. I didn't want to be looking for the vote, right, going back and looking for the vote on the record and in the minutes because it was consensus in executive session.
I have another question. So at the elementary school, um, the elementary schools have champs, right? And champ could, could be seen as a diversion type program. Um, do we have any such program at the middle and high school?
Not necessarily. So we know champs, as you mentioned, um, Ms. Jones, uh, is that champs in grade is at the elementary school level. Um, the only thing that we have at the middle and high would be our, our P and I services that talk to them about uh, making better and informed decisions as well as the, just the informal interactions that are um, that our S R Os have with our students. But there is not, uh, to my knowledge, a champs or great type of program at our secondary schools.
Yeah, I was asking about champs, um, for the good of the group. What champs does is provide a curriculum um that's to be followed. And it, within that program, they talked about the students making good choices, right? Talk about um, the, um, it diverts students from the use of drugs, alcohol, fights. Get um, being involved in gangs and I'm, I was just wondering if at the middle to high school, if you have any of this type of program related to that, or you're looking into some diversion type of program? Cause we doing a lot of talking about P B I S, but P B I S is an incentive program.
Absolutely.
So there's a difference.
Absolutely.
So I'm thinking being preventive, you know, what are we using? Miss, but in, what are we using beside of acting after the fact?
Right. I know that um, uh, uh, other divisions have had uh, um, uh, uh, conversations with um, our sheriff's department. I know our sheriff's department had an open forum in October, which were uh, some of our other divisions attended that um, to get ideas and also as a town forum to talk to our parents and those that were in attendance about, about things that you're mentioning. Um, again, I, I'm not going to say that we do or don't, but to my knowledge, I don't know whether we have that type of program. That would have to be a discussion with another division.
Now, I do know that uh, I'm proud of the fact that our schools are partnering with local law enforcement to try to address prevention. I know that uh, uh, there was an event. Uh, you, speaking of gangs, uh, since that was mentioned earlier, there was an event in which the sheriff's department partnered with Heritage High School and had a open forum with parents to really educate parents on uh, on gangs and how to be proactive and what you're looking at and what you're seeing. And if you're seeing certain things, not to brush it aside, but make, but teaching them how that might be covertly connected to peripheral gang activity or beginning gang activity. So uh, I actually was speaking to Dr. Richards and she had stepped away from that because Sheriff Levitt was presenting when I was talking to her on another matter. So we, but I, I do agree with what I believe is the sentiment of Ms. Jones, which is to say that we want to search out research-based and evidence-based programs that are about prevention. That can, that are developmentally appropriate for secondary perhaps, because we do have things for elementary, we tend to. But it falls off when you move up to the secondary, so I'm very supportive of that. And I'd like to partner with you and, and as you partner with our law enforcement agencies and other agencies that may not be law enforcement. Agencies that may have programs that are tailored for secondary.
Yes, sir.
I have one more question. Um, on the students that you mentioned at each level that's receiving mentoring services. Are those mentors just other R C P S employees? Are you allowing outside?
Um, it, it's my understanding, again, this is not my division, so this is not really my wheelhouse and just speaking on, on the highlights. But it's my understanding, these are internal and external mentors uh throughout the, the community, community stakeholders that signed up to be mentors. As well as internal partnerships with our, some, some current employees.
And I'll, I'll yield to Dr. Smith Dixon, I know that's from her division, I think Deborah, Deborah Neeson, this is data she provided, is that right? Gotcha, okay. So both internal and external.
Is there any type of background done for mentors? I figured you were on it, I just don't picture. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, good evening, board. Uh, Dr. Rhodes, I'll be going over the final financial reports for the month of November. All right, revenue for November was twenty point nine million, our revenue year-to-date is sixty-one point eight million, which is thirty point nine percent of our budget. Uh, last year in November, we received eighteen point nine million, fifty-eight point five million year-to-date, which was thirty-two point three percent of our budget. Expenditures for November, sixteen point nine million, eighty-six point two million year-to-date, which is forty-two point one percent of our budget. Uh, last November, we expended fifteen point seven million, seventy-six point two million year-to-date, which is forty-one point three percent of our budget. Outstanding encompasses for no ma- for November, two million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our fund balance at the end of November is approximately eleven point nine million. Last year at the end of November, we were at twenty point nine million approximately. Our assets are eleven point nine million approximately, liability zero, all clear, fund balance is approximately eleven point nine million. Any questions? I will tell you, uh, next month, we'll be at the halfway point of the year. I'll have probably ninety-five percent of all the revenue from the taxes in, so I'll be able to get a good picture of where we stand. That halfway point is critical, so I'll be able to report that to you next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Oh, question.
Uh, I've just been noticing a trend over the last couple, um, couple months that our fund balance is about half of what it was last year. Is that to be expected at this time of year?
Well, some of that is to be expected because we budgeted five million for it.
Right.
So when you see it next month, when all our taxes, it's hard to say because tax revenue comes in different periods of time. So it's higher last year coming, it's, we got more in last year than we have at this time. Next month, we'll get a good, you'll get to see a good picture of that and I don't expect you to see that big variance like you've been saying. So it's all, it's all timing on that tax revenue. Next month, our fund balance will be at the highest point it'll ever be at. And then it'll start riding down after that, so. I always tell the board that in that December or when we report on December, we're at the top because the tax money's in. And then we're gonna hold on and see where we end up. But to your point, uh, next month will be the tail. I don't there has been a big variance, it has been worrying me, but the tax revenue, I've looked at it already and it does, that gap does close.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Keith. Dr. Rhodes?
Um, gentlemen, I do have some prepared remarks. Uh, but I do want to preface my remarks by saying that certainly, um, we, we all know and our public knows that uh, there's been a lot of news coverage uh about personnel-related events uh, in, in, in some of our schools and certainly, while we certainly keep our board informed. Obviously, there are levels of information that we can provide to key individuals and, and so please bear with me. And I'll, I'll try to underscore what, what, what my point is. As an undergraduate at Georgia Southern University, I pursued and completed my Bachelor of Science degree in communication arts with broad-based emphasis in print and broadcast journalism, theater, marketing and speech communication. During the last two years of my undergraduate studies, I had the privilege of working as a local television news reporter and anchor during which time I covered the political and human interest beat to include the local board of education there in Bullock County. I value the role that the media plays in our democracy as enshrined within the Bill of Rights within our constitution. Specifically, the right to a free press. I also value the importance of ethical journalism and reporting. In my news reporting and writing and ethics of journalism classes, I learned that my role was to apply the fundamental test of newsworthiness and to always prioritize and value accuracy in reporting. Of course, that was decades before the rise of social media. Uh, where regrettably, accuracy and ethics are often casualties of sensationalism and commercial competitiveness between outlets seeking to garner the most clicks and views. I wanted to use my remarks this evening to clearly communicate with our public that Rockdale County Public Schools, as perhaps the largest employer in Rockdale County with over two thousand four hundred certified and classified employees, will occasionally have employees that may fail to adhere to board policies in key areas. If and when that happens, Rockdale County Public Schools is committed to fully investigating and holding offending employees accountable to our board policies as warranted. This includes working closely with our local law enforcement partners when appropriate to ensure that our law enforcement partners can work to independently determine if potential criminal liability exists. As a school district, Rockdale County Public Schools and all school districts must honor all relevant state and or federal statutes that protect the privacy of students' educational records and specific personnel information and records of relevant staff. This often means that we're not at liberty to disclose information to media outlets and reporters. Information that is otherwise protected by relevant statutes. Our compliance with the law in these instances should not be misconstrued or mistaken as a lack of transparency to the public. Our top priority as a school district remains the safety and well-being of our students and staff. That's all I have, Madam Chu.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. Our next item on the agenda is information, just letting you guys know that um, this plus report is in assembly. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes from November of twenty twenty-three?
Second Akita.
I have a motion and second, all in favor to adopt the November meetings, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. There's no old business and there's no new business, but we do have a new business consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the five items under the consent agenda, item fourteen?
So moved.
And do I have a, I have a motion and second, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. There is no new business discussion agenda and there's no board discussion, but there is a need for executive session. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So. Second Akita.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries. At this time, we'll move into executive session and we'll return to open session at the completion of that.
Okay, the time is now 9:12 and the board has come back into open session. Do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to assign Anthony Crowell, currently assistant principal at Conyers Middle School to assistant principal at Rockdale County High School effective January 4th, 2024?
Move.
Second Akita.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion that the board approved the representation of Dr. Erica Wakefall, Dr. Aleah Gilbert, and Stephen Lillard in pending litigation as authorized by Board Policy BBE?
So move, Justin.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hands please. Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting?
Ooh.
Second Akita.
All in favor, raise your hands please. Motion carries. We are adjourned and the meeting ended at 9:13. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.